Call to order.
12:22.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We only got really one thing to do today. As you know, George is going to be leaving us. He's found a better opportunity for more money. Otherwise, he'd like to stay here. Go ahead, pass that.
I have the same letter.
So we've got to determine our next steps. I guess first, do we have to accept a resignation?
I believe we do.
Okay, motion to accept. Second, okay.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
She's second. Laura.
Okay. Do we accept it with regret?
Yes.
Ah, deep regret.
All in favor? On to new business. I think we need to form a team like we did, a committee like we did last time to...
Can I ask you, there's a selectmen's meeting tonight, and they always allow for 48-hour things. Can we get that on the selectmen's agenda for tonight?
I don't know.
Because as soon as they accept it, we can advertise.
Okay.
Is that, is that right?
The short version is yes and maybe. They do, whether or not they would take it up, I don't know. I could try to get it over and into them. Because I know their next meeting after tonight would be until...
Two weeks.
Yeah.
But they do have a walk-on.
Well, they have business within 48 hours.
Yeah, same thing as we do, yeah.
And where that, it could be important for us.
Yeah, I've talked to Jim, so he knows it's coming. Whether or not he, or they put it on the agenda tonight, I could ask Kim and see whether or not they take it up.
I guess the point is, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. Because it falls under other topics.
Right.
Well, it's their prerogative. So they might decide that they want to talk about it.
But we have to accept the resignation, and then they have to agree?
That's where it gets weird. So technically, with the way that the con, the way I understand the contract, you're the organization that accepts the resignation because of the wording in my contract. You're the recommending authority, I guess?
But then we need permission to advertise.
But a job, a town position cannot be posted without the select board approval. So they would have to approve it before it can be posted. And my understanding is that my notice to them is more of a courtesy because of the way the contract's written. You guys are the receivers of the formal resignation notice. But we can't post it until they approve it.
Okay.
I'll go tonight and ask to speak on 48 hours.
I wonder if we need to go. If we could go to town hall and just see Jim.
I was going to email it to him.
Email and say that...
Jim already knows this, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I talked to him multiple times last week. But on Friday, I told him that I would be sending a letter to the selectmen today. Depending on what we all said here today.
Well, I don't want to have to wait two weeks. Okay. Well, you want to call Jim and find out how we do it? Because I'll go down and get on the walk-in topic.
That's at the end of the meeting. I think they have a long meeting tonight. But they might be able to just do it.
Well, I mean, with the way the 48 hours works, you might, they might be able to take it out of order and just... Because it's a topic not... I don't know, yeah. Might, they might just stick it all the way at the end. Yeah, I don't know.
Although it's not, it's not likely we're going to find someone within five weeks.
No. We just want to start the process.
Yeah, I mean, the chair has the... Sorry, my hands all over the place.
Calm down.
It's okay. The chair can take matters out of order. So if Mr. Brewer wanted to, he could pull something out of the 48 hours and take it in regular order where it would be normally. Otherwise, something like that would be under either staff or correspondence.
I think the first listing is appointments and things.
Yeah, so technically, if it was, if I had gotten it to them by Wednesday, that's when it would have been. And then they might have taken it as an action item, posting the opening or something like that.
So we got waters that aren't very clear. Do you want to call Jim, or you want me to call Jim?
I can call.
Okay. Let me be here when you call, talk to him. So we know which direction.
We're done, I'll give him a call.
Okay. We'll do that and see. Whatever, I'll go tonight if we take it out of order. We have to wait till the end. I might learn something.
We have to let the Board of Library Commissioners in the mass library system know.
It's part of it. There's a form that we submit to them, and then it goes from there, which I think, I think Don will have to sign it up. But that's, we got time on that one.
Okay. We all have a copy of the job description and his contract, correct?
I wondered if George had anything to add to the job description.
No, it's, well, it's funny enough. We have interviews the next two weeks, Bonnie and I, with the salary investigation they're doing. So it's funny, we both got selected for checking on that. But the job description is good the way it is.
Okay. So the job description is all set. Do we want to put, let, put somebody temporarily in charge after George leaves until we find someone? Unless we find someone before then?
You mean an interim?
An interim, yeah, interim, yeah.
We may end up doing that.
Depends on how, how we get it. Would that be something to be interested in, temporarily?
Yeah, temporarily.
Okay.
Temporarily?
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Because you like what you do?
I love being the director of the library. That's not something I'm interested in.
We won't take you away from that.
Thank you.
Now, it could be up to three years.
As long as I get my story tied, it's fine.
So that would really let us off the hook.
Yeah. And what's your date, George?
March 30th. And I was just, before you came over, it was, so the way that it all falls, my last day will probably be in office, would be March 28th. Because that's the Thursday, and then that Friday is Good Friday, which is a holiday for us, so...
Okay.
So as we said before, he's taking the last day off.
But I'm not burning my vacation time, so there's that.
Do you get reimbursed for vacation time in town?
Should.
Do they buy back?
I believe so.
I think so.
If you have sick days, unused sick days or vacation time, I believe you get paid half.
They set a limit though.
Yeah, they do.
It's not full, but it's...
Well, take advantage of what you can.
I'll see, I'm going to try and, I have a, as I mentioned, I also have a medical procedure scheduled next weekend. So I'm going to be off like one day. And I'm trying to make sure it's not longer than a day, but I can't. We'll see.
In case we...
Then Monday, I might come in just for my shift at 5:00. But we'll see how it goes.
We want to form a committee.
Search Committee.
Search Committee.
Search Committee. You're going to be on it?
I'm on all committees.
Did you chair the last one?
Yeah. But I don't want to chair this one.
You don't want to chair, but you'll be on it?
You've done it.
Carol was on it, Carol Gatto's.
Yeah.
Ned.
Yeah, we had Ned.
Yeah.
Ned's a good, because he's an outsider that comes in.
Ned, Ned's has a lot of experience. Yeah. People experience. Laura? Yeah. Now, would the committee select their own chair?
Yeah.
That's how it was the last time?
Polly, do you want to be on since you've done so many times?
I haven't.
That's true, you've been here a long time. We haven't done it.
Well, I didn't know if somebody else was interested. Sue, or Susan, or Polly?
I'll, I'll give it a go.
Okay.
Okay.
What did we have last time? Three people?
There were five.
There were five?
Carol and Carol.
Oh, she's, no.
Carol Sheen.
No, she wasn't, Carol Sheen wasn't on it.
I thought she was. She was a retired librarian from time...
She should have been gone by then. So it was Carol, me, Laura, and there was one other person. That's the four. And Ned?
I thought Carol Sheen was on it. Do you know her?
Do you know Carol Sheen?
I think there were two Carols on it.
Was there?
Yeah, she was on that committee. Because she was a trustee who left the board, and you came on the board.
Little did I know. And I know she would not be interested. Neither one of them would be interested.
What about Polly's this time?
Three trustees, Laura Nelson.
Three.
Three trustees.
She's still in town.
Oh, I wonder.
And they've been traveling a lot, so I don't know if she's in town or not. But I mean, that's definitely a potential.
As secretary, do you want me to call Ned and contact Laura?
Talk to Ned first. I'd like to... He does keep a different perspective.
I keep in touch with Ned. His email is NBD is me. Because his kids didn't want him to forget it.
Do we need four, or do you want five? Four. As you start getting up in number, it's hard to get everybody together.
It's a good idea to have an odd number just in case you have to break a tie.
Well, I won't, I won't vote unless we have to. If we have four, then I don't vote unless there's a tie.
Well, usually the chair doesn't vote unless there's a...
True, true.
What do you think, Laura, four or five? What makes it five?
Five. Yeah, definitely an odd number.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Three trustees. Three trustees. Or else every meeting has to be posted.
Okay. Laura, I'll step away. Laura, Polly, Sue, that's three. Okay. Are you going to call Ned?
Oh, Laura. Laura Nelson.
We always have to have groups with, at least two people with the same name.
It does work that way.
So we have Laura, Polly, and Sue, three trustees. And now we need two more people. And you're going to contact Ned and Laura?
Laura Nelson.
And what if Laura doesn't want to do it? Or is not around?
Laura Nelson, next door?
Yeah. Do you know her?
My daughter actually knows her. I don't know her.
She used to be on our board.
Actually, I did see that.
Laura and Laura.
Laura and Laura, okay.
Laura, Laura, Sue, Sue, Polly, Polly.
Ned might know someone.
Oh, Sue Brown. She was on the Friends board. She was Burns.
Sue Burns, she's Burns.
I was close.
Yeah.
Brown, Burns. But she's just stepped down from their board. But I know she still lives in town. She was the one who was running the book sales and everything.
Yeah, I thought she was looking to get away from things like that.
She is, boy.
She might be persuaded. She was on the long-range plan committee.
Ah.
So she has some experience.
Okay.
Dan was too. So what's your name? Sue Burgers, that's close.
It was Sue Seki originally.
Yeah.
All right, well, we should be able to get two out of three.
How about Sue Branca, the former librarian?
I don't think that's a good idea.
No, okay. And why do we say director and not librarian? Why is it director and not librarian?
So it's a semantic issue because of pay scales. So there was a move about 30, I don't know, 30, 40 years ago, amongst municipalities to try to standardize job descriptions between departments to make it easier to compare pay scales between positions. So instead of saying librarian, most library directors start being called library directors because a library director might be a librarian. But there's also librarians under them. So in the past, especially in a town like Westport, smaller towns, the library director was the sole librarian on staff. And then there would be people below them who were pre-professional librarians. So because of that, they transitioned it to, started calling library directors, library directors, instead of just town librarian. Because those might be sub-librarians. So especially in larger towns where there are multiple librarians on staff, it makes a lot more sense. For example, here technically, I would be the librarian. Bonnie would be the assistant librarian. But it's kind of demeaning to Bonnie for being an assistant librarian. So that's the short version. Some towns still do it.
Maybe they could say librarian assistant.
It is silly.
That's the thing, so...
That's something different.
So there are some towns like Worcester, I think is the only major library that still refers to their supreme puba as the city library. But that's because of the city charter, specifically having that position listed as that title. So it would require an act of Worcester's city council requesting Beacon Hill change their city charter to change the wording. And they don't care enough to do it. So most towns, though, it's, that's, that's the reason.
Yeah. Would a library director be in charge of all the branches? Or would each branch?
It can be, that's the thing. There's not a lot of libraries down here that have multiple branches left. Darbyth, New Bedford. Where have?
Doesn't fall, ever.
Not anymore?
No, they have a bookmobile.
Yeah, they got a new bookmobile.
Bookmobile's going out today.
Yeah. But now they lost their last, the East Branch closed about 10 years ago. The South Branch closed during COVID. The lease ran out of the building during their previous mayor's legal issues, and nothing came of it.
Now, do you think Dan would have voted?
I have a question. Bonnie's willing to serve as interim. How do we pick up Bonnie's work? Because we don't want anyone to think that we can use one person to fill two positions.
That's a question, Polly, I'm sorry.
What do we do about Bonnie's work if she is acting director?
We don't want somebody to think we don't need them.
Oh, no, yeah, you definitely, that's not the case. So they know that basically, that's the, you know, the assistant director is part of her responsibility and all that.
But what Polly's getting at is, we don't want to do it to make it seem like we can do it, let her do bill jobs long-term. Especially the way the town is thinking right now with money.
We need to have another body or be able to add hours to other people to...
Because it's like saying we don't need you.
Well, it's a matter of making do. I mean, there'll be some extra money without, you know, with the difference, you know, with me not being here. There'll be some extra money for some of the other part-timers. If, you know, the desk needs to get covered and things like that.
But we don't want anyone to think that we can run the library without two.
Well, you can't, I mean, that's the thing.
You can say that, but the town can look at it differently.
Yeah.
Well, there's...
I understand.
We need to maintain that position.
Yeah, but there's, I don't really...
So that when we hire a new director, we also have an assistant.
So it sounds like some of Bonnie's responsibilities in this interim, she should delegate to like maybe share it amongst the three, two others, or...
Increase their hours.
Can you move someone up and with the understanding they moved that, no, you can't do that. Because that's, that could be an issue.
What you could do is, the way I've got the schedule set up, the desk coverage isn't an issue. It's more of an issue of tasks. So it'll be up to, you know, Bonnie to try to, you know, do as much as she can, so I'm sorry. But the only other difference is, you know, maybe increase the hours of some of the part-timers if there are places where extra desk coverage is needed. But in terms of the stuff that I do versus the stuff that Bonnie does, obviously Amy can help with some of the bill stuff and the payroll and all of that, but...
But that indicates that the library can run without...
Did you see where she's going?
I don't want to lose assistant director while I'm interim.
I know, and that's the thing is like, in terms of delegating and everything, there's no way to...
I know that the work will get done. But we don't want to lose that position.
Right, but the only way to do what you're saying without, would be to get a completely another person, was what you're trying to do. So there will be stuff that gets delayed. There will be stuff that doesn't get done.
Well, because even, even the Library Board of Commissioners has people who will come in as an interim director.
Right.
I, I...
I don't think it's necessary because there's nothing in my job that Bonnie is not capable of doing. There will be projects that don't get done for a while, but...
But will the town understand that we could bring someone in and not lose her? But if we use her, will we be able to keep two positions?
Yes, because her position's union.
Yeah, I think you missed the point.
I am, because I do not understand how to fix what you're trying to say.
You leave, and we don't have a replacement for three months. She's doing...
And the library runs just fine.
And the library's running smoothly.
Her position's union, so you can't touch it without going to the union.
But...
Can you, can we give her extra responsibilities without going to the union?
Well, she has a job description as well, yeah.
Yeah, part of her job description is serving as director in the director's absence.
But I see where Polly's coming from.
I, I get where she's coming at it, but I don't see any way to fix it without...
The town's looking to cut money.
Yes, but there's no way, like, basically, it's, the town knows that I'm leaving. So that someone has to make up the difference until there's a new me.
So actually, the town's going to save some money.
Yeah.
Can we add hours for the other people? Like, I know that Amy has a number of hours. How many are we up to?
They're all at full-time already.
Oh, we're up there.
Yeah, Amy's at 40 hours.
It took a long time to get up there.
Yeah. So the only place where you could add hours is for the part-timers. So right now...
That would be Dan?
Dan's at 42. That's the thing. So we've got Amy, Dan.
That's why he's here all the time.
Amy's in the union?
Amy and Dan are both at 40. So that's one of the things that we do.
So you have Nancy?
Nancy, they used to be at 25.
And Alyssa are, I have them regularly scheduled at 15 hours a week. We could raise them to 19.
That's eight hours.
In terms of desk coverage. But basically, it's just a matter of moving the people around to make sure the desk or all the other things. You know, between Dan and Amy, you know, we have enough staff to spread around so that it's doable.
Now, you guys take Saturdays. You do one, she does another.
Yeah.
So how would you do Saturday?
Generally, either Amy or Dan can serve as the supervisor when one of us is out on vacation or something like that. I haven't done the April schedule yet. I'm going to do it with Bonnie when I get a chance next week or two. Make sure everything's squared away. My recommendation would probably be go to two people on Saturday to make sure we have enough people Monday through Friday without affecting open hours. It can work with two. Most of the time, it's usually not that busy on the weekend as a stopgap until we get somebody in. And then whoever is on that day, be it, you know, Amy or Dan, however it falls, we'll figure that out.
And you will be available to Amy 24/7?
Amy doesn't need us. She's fine, but yeah.
I see where Polly's coming from. The town is looking at where can they eliminate, and they could eliminate the whole library.
Well, some people would like to do that now. It's safer again.
But this almost gives them like an opportunity to talk about it.
But they, the one thing is, they don't pay attention to us.
Until there's something to pay attention to?
Yeah.
And the other issue is that, you know, there is the MBLC restriction about having to have a master's director within a certain number of time. You get some leeway and a director leaves before a new director comes on.
Okay.
But there is also, I mean, no offense, we don't want to say it, but, you know, Bonnie's still working on her and her master's degree for library science. So because of that, she cannot become a full director in a town Westport size as of right now. Not that she would want to, but... So there is also that she can't step up and just be the director and then kill the assistant director position.
Because then we would lose our certification. We'd lose the state aid.
Yes, and you'd lose...
And possibly our position in the network.
Yeah, yeah. If you get decertified, every town in Massachusetts has the choice of whether or not to circulate to your library.
Oh, we know that.
And I know the majority of libraries, the default answer is no. So obviously, we never want to let that happen.
So we have a search committee and...
We've got to find two more.
Right.
Yes. And you're going to contact?
And then what? And they will meet?
Mm-hmm. And we'll find out when we can get a job description posted. Did they do that on Indeed as well?
They, the town automatically puts everything on Indeed, yeah. So then we would just need to know, for them to post that, who to send the, I guess you could just tell the Selectmen's Office who to forward them to. So who would be the, the chair to receive that?
Well, who would they select to be the chair?
Yeah. Should they come here? Not be opened by anybody, but come here and then we could let whoever the chair is know about it? Wouldn't want them sent to your house.
The applications.
Yeah.
I think these have to send them to the Selectmen's Office, and then they get forwarded over.
I don't know how it works.
That's what I had to do when, when we did this last time. Because then I had to like hunt around, and the email was wrong, and I had to call the office to get the right one, and yada, yada.
Here's our old
Yeah, because probably Jim's the registered user.
Posted job
Yeah, it goes to the board of selectmen.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just have to let Jim know who the chair is. I'll give you this, this is whoever's going to be chair. That's some information that George gave me to where to look for certain things.
Different job boards.
Yeah, different job boards.
Depending how far of a net you want to cast. I know Matipoiset posted, they actually hired, well, that's something you could do too. Matipoiset actually hired a firm to do the search, but
That costs money.
It costs money. But they went national, where they posted it on all the national job boards too, as Matipoiset.
Well, they don't worry about spending money so much as we do. And we did a great job. Absolutely, absolutely.
So I would say, well, it's up to the chairman, but I would think that once you get at least two or three applications, you can get together and review them. You wouldn't want to do it every time you get one application.
What was the timeline for applications?
It's usually
Do you remember?
It's usually
There was a deadline?
Well, it depends on the position, but most of the time it's usually a month or until filled. Or two weeks, you know, with the director position, it gets weird sometimes, because some towns will do, you know, open until high, you know, filled, or, I, I think when we did it last time, it was a month. But it could be, you know, priority given in the first two weeks.
If somebody's looking for a job, they're gonna be looking.
Yeah.
I signed up, I signed up for Indeed to get alerts when the director's job comes up.
Ah. If, if you have interviews, would you be interested in being there?
I don't know if it would be appropriate. Don and I talked to him a little bit about whether or not, and I think you know, definitely, you know, you can float names by me. I don't know everyone down here, but if I know somebody, I'll let, you know, definitely let anybody know, but it may, it may be a little awkward.
Well, if you had questions about the job, you'd be able to answer them.
Oh, totally, yeah. And that's the thing, like, I'm around, so it's like, you know, if I need
No, I mean, if you stand in on an interview or looked over applications with us or something.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, if the board wants me to, I will, but it's one of those things, I'm not sure if that would make it awkward for the prospective candidates.
Yeah, clear.
Because I know when I was here, you know, Sue stayed away.
The Westport Credit Union has been looking for a part-time accountant for three months. On Indeed, they haven't had any of them. They've had a couple, but they didn't work out, I mean, the interviews didn't work out. But there's a lot of people looking for work, and there's a lot of people that don't want to work.
That don't want to work? Let's hope there's somebody out there that wants to be our new director.
Well, you, the, who picks the chair? The, the library trustees that are on the committee pick the chair, or does the whole committee pick the chair?
Probably the whole committee.
Okay.
I'm gonna pick you, Laura. She's the chair, because you've done this, so.
I've, I've done it.
Yeah.
I have.
I think you'd be a good chair.
I can't chair.
Yeah.
And Laura is a retired librarian.
I, I sense that, I was hearing, but I, I was beginning to feel that. In Westport?
Rehoboth.
Rehoboth, nice.
The center of the Bridgewater Triangle, if you know anything about hauntings.
I don't.
It's a very active
Yeah, it's one of four towns I have not been to, the libraries in southeastern Massachusetts.
Wait, have you been to the library?
Oh, just in general. Rehoboth, Dayton, the Free Town Libraries, and Carver are the only five libraries left south of forty-four I have not been to.
Do you know the Laker librarian, Carol?
No, she, that was two librarians ago.
Carol?
Carol took a job as the assistant director in either Walpole or Woburn.
Of late?
The
She's a Westport resident?
Yeah, so the director in Matipoiset, Jen Jones, who is an old friend of mine, we worked together in Plymouth, just moved over and took that position. So she's been there for, I think, literally a month now. But Carol went in, I think her last day was like November thirtieth.
Carol was there?
Yeah.
So Polly, when you give the names to them, they will put it together and have a meeting?
Have a meeting ASAP.
You can keep us updated at the monthly?
You bet, and even in between.
Okay. Any old business? Other topics not anticipated? I have, I have a question under that. Can we count this meeting as a monthly meeting?
I already answered that, which one we know?
I don't know, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Technically, it's up to the board, I mean, you know.
Do you have anything that we need to know about?
Anything we need to act on in March?
We might want to have a meeting and find out how the search committee's doing.
True, all right.
About the selectmen.
Yes.
And we are required to meet monthly.
Monthly, yeah.
Could be a quick one.
As of right now, I mean, I wouldn't recommend doing any big poll and policy initiatives. I don't have anything else as of right now pending.
Okay. All right, we'll see who the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
That good? Next meeting will be
All in favor?
All in favor.